Is that a business? Are we going to depart?
There it is. But it's why it falls into. There's not a problem because eight, you don't make other money. It's more of a, my brother, my brother. It's expensive, but. But he won't let me show all your losses that I should, you know, the show if it was a business, actually we haven't shown.
All right, we're gonna get started. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, founded in the early days of liberty and justice for all. Okay.
Yeah, fix this down.
Fix this.
Oh, I hear a nickel.
Yeah.
It's the sound on on that TV. There you go. Oh, see, but now that turned the audio back on.
So are we good?
Yes.
Okay, we'll start from the top. Uh, Mark?
Here.
Howard?
Here.
Mike, here. Roberta?
Here.
Gwen?
Here.
Lydia?
Oh, see, but now that turned the audio back. Oh, Jeff.
Yes.
Okay, no Lydia, uh, Mark? Here. Howard?
Here.
Mike, and we gotta get that shake. Here. Gwen?
Here.
Lydia?
Here. Well, Jeff.
Okay, well, Lydia, uh, Mark? Here. Howard? Here. My name.
There's a remote for the TV.
There you go.
Oh, perfect, okay.
Okay, you have them muted.
All right, Dale?
Here.
Amber?
Here.
Robbie?
Here.
Jean?
Here.
All right, everybody's here except Lydia. Um, approval of the minutes?
I make a motion to table those minutes until we have a chance to go over them.
Yeah, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, uh, opposed? Motion passes. Uh, discussion on inspector. I'll leave it open to the board for open discussion.
I think we have a really good candidate that we've, uh, identified, but I, I really feel that we should at least take in at least one more candidate. But that's up to the board. I'll make a motion to do that.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I'll second that. Yeah, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Uh.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, while we're there, should we schedule a, a executive meeting to discuss with more candidates?
Yes.
Okay, we're going.
Wells?
Who's available? Who would be available either later this week or next?
I could do Monday night, Tuesday nights, by all Tuesday.
I cannot do the twentieth, I have a. Meeting Tuesday.
Maybe Tuesday, but Mike, you are not here Monday or Tuesday?
I think council meeting is Monday night, isn't it?
Oh, it is.
The commissioner and council. Yeah.
What if we did, I mean, if we're just interviewing a candidate, well, not everybody can do during the day. Um.
Somebody needs to contact the candidate too.
Right.
Yeah, I can reach out to some candidates, like we can all agree on a.
Is there, are you completely out next week?
Yes.
Is there any chance anybody can do it this week? Thursday or Friday?
Absolutely not.
No?
I'd be up too.
Okay.
Well, we can't do it tomorrow, there's not enough time to post it.
Oh, that's true.
I could do it Monday, the twenty fifth. Or if we want to stick to Wednesdays, that's fine with folks do, I can do the twenty seventh.
I can do the twenty seventh.
Now that's pushing us out two weeks, I'm gonna look at Jean.
I could do the twenty seventh.
And that's okay with your schedule and we need to stop doing inspections. And that would still give you what we need a couple of weeks to help get whoever.
Yeah.
I can do the twenty seventh.
Okay, so.
Long way away.
Okay, I know, it is a long way away, I just, I mean, I don't.
What's wrong with next Wednesday?
Mike wouldn't be here.
Which is funny.
Won't be here either.
Who else?
That next one, that.
Oh, you said the twentieth you could do.
I cannot do it the twenty, twenty seventh is one, that's it.
Okay, do I have a motion for August twenty seventh at five thirty PM?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Uh. Opposed? Okay, motion passes. We're gonna set a executive meeting for August twenty seventh by thirty PM, do we wanna follow it with a public meeting?
Yes. We can make a decision, I agree, um, do you need a motion for that?
We need a motion and how much time do we wanna give for an executive meeting?
Depends on how many candidates we're gonna have.
I'd say with what we have, two at the most, unless we wanna bring the other candidate back in.
We can.
It's up to the board.
I wouldn't wanna bring him back in yet.
Okay.
That's just me. I just think we need to interview the other candidates.
I've been in for an hour.
Six thirty for regular meetings?
Yes.
The motion?
So I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? I'll second. Okay, have a motion and a second, all those in favor for a public meeting at six thirty? On August twenty seventh.
What time are we doing the executive?
Five thirty.
I'll have two more minutes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay, other business. Greg Wyrmann. Uh, seems to have come up again. Uh, concerns of possibly doing business out of a residence. Uh, um, this was brought up in a commissioner meeting. And now has tripled down to the plan commission. I think Jean has found a little bit of information on this. Uh, Jean, would you mind sharing with the board?
Well, first of all, I found that this was a subdivision. I have set of drawings of subdivision called White Plains Battle Subdivision. And there's covenants in there, one of the. Rules, number nine rule states that there shall be no commercial business enterprises in this subdivision. And so then I shared that with some of the folks on planning commission and that's where we're at today. Just because of the complaints we've been getting from the, the neighbors up there.
And now. There's no, does anybody know, do they have a, um, HOA, or is it just the covenants in the subdivision?
All I saw was what was under drawing, so I, I don't know. I didn't pursue it anymore, I didn't know what direction to take after that, so.
Do you want me to weigh in?
Yes.
Present, okay, so with restrictive covenants, when they're prepared and assessed against a community, there's generally. Two styles. There could be covenants that are assessed that are recorded either on the plat or separately against each and every property. That are either enforceable by the homeowners against each other. Or alternatively, they have a setup and a mechanism that there's an actual homeowners association with a separate set of bylaws that calls for their governance. A lot of developments prior to like nineteen ninety five, nineteen ninety nine, it's not uncommon to find that there's restrictive covenants. That the developer has that are slapped on, but there's no HOA mechanism process to oversee them. So typically what you find is it's the neighbors that are overseeing them. To enforce them, or alternatively, if they set up for HOA, then it's the HOA. Very rarely is it their responsibility of the municipality to step in and enforce them, and the only way that we can. Is if when this development was created. There was contractual relationship with the county to say if no homeowners enforce it and no HOA forces it, that you can step in. So that would be the magic language we need to look at, otherwise these covenants are a private contractual relationship between all the homeowners out there with each other. But we've got no ability to step in and enforce it, nor should we be.
So the. Next conversation that I suppose is gonna come up here is what defines a residence or a commercial property? And I, I think there's been some, uh, discussion from some of the neighbors that they feel that there's a commercial company being operated out of what is now considered a residence.
Yep, so separately, what we need to take a look at is how is this community set up, was it a PUD, a planned unit development? Or was it given a strict R one, R two, R three, or mixed use zoning? If it was given, say, for example, an R one or R two zoning, then we go to our code and we say, what if any business opportunities are allowed? Out of the house, right? I mean, if it's businessman or woman that is sitting at their table and running their quick books. And you say there's a prohibition business being operated out of there, I think we'd all smile and say that's allowed, right? Versus a mechanic operating out of the garage, grinding tires, et cetera, till nine o'clock at night, that's what's not anticipated, so depending upon what's. Being operated out of there, we can go to our zoning code and say, what's the current zoning, is it R two, what business opportunities are allowed out of R two, if any?
Do, Amber, do you happen to remember what that property is zoned? I wanna say it was R, I, I, I know it's a res, no, maybe it was Ag.
It's Ag because, uh, it's a hell of a slot.
All bag, yeah.
It's all bad.
Quite large parcels in that.
They're two point something, all the lots are.
Right. So it's zoned agriculture.
Yes, so we need to look at agriculture and what's the existing zoning code and take a look at what businesses, businesses we can operate out of there and prepare the two. And if it's not allowed, then what we're looking at then is a request for a variance of use if they want it to be.
I have the chart just because of the BVA.
And I think Mark brings up a good point, um. What, what actually does Stark County define as a business? Is that something that should be like in an ordinance? As to where we're gonna define what a business is and is not? As you brought up, you know, some gal doing, uh, taxes in the house, well, she meets with five clients a year, is that really a business? Eh, now we have dump trucks coming in a hundred times a day, refueling, dumping loads, is that a business? Maybe it is. How do we define that in Stark County, or how should we define that in Stark County?
Yeah, typically what you find is that with each zoning code, there are broad categories of what is allowed. In that zoning district. And then there's an additional category that says this can be allowed, but it requires a special use, so it requires a special application to come. Before us, and there's these broad categories, and typically what you find is it's fifteen years old because. If tailors, right, well, how many tailors do you have around?
So I'm guessing for this, we would probably be looking under. Uh, well, there's worker repair shop for customer work. Located on same lot. Um.
This may be something. Both.
I'm trying to see if we can find trucking.
Let him come back, yeah, I agree. So I would say.
Yeah, I guess.
I feel like that was.
My, you want to provide some information, what already has been investigated, what's been observed out there, let's confirm what the zoning is out there. I guess, maybe do we need to see when it was approved, is there anything recorded that, um, prior. Commissions had recorded against this development that are restrictions that we need to be aware of? And then we can confirm against our code what's allowed, not allowed, and give an opinion from there.
Um, attorney that wasn't there, but the me, we asked Mr. Wyrmann to come here and he came here and said he's not operating the business. I mean, he came right here, I was sitting right here and said, I don't have any business, not operating a bit. So. It's.
Typically, there's six pickup trucks sitting there each morning. Some of them are gone.
Kind of a.
Now, the other.
Manipulate.
Some issues we ran into in our little business years ago with defining an employee. So. If he has employees, if he tells them what to do, where to go and when to be there, they are an employee. And so. If he's got employees, then he's got a business.
Did anyone take a look at the Indiana Secretary of State page for his business entity operation to see what was listed as the?
Think he scouted in another person's name.
It's, it's in another address.
But, and that's what kind of is Greg, he knows.
I can only share what we, where we landed originally, which was that there's no, there were no customers coming there, basically, he's parking the trucks. So it seemed that it was more of a civil matter than.
I, I guess my question, could we table this and let, and give the attorney some more information, could we, could I make a motion to do that and let him get, begin to do it a little bit?
Okay, I have a.
To make that motion.
I have a motion on the table to table to give the attorney time to catch up, and I'm assuming have it back on the agenda for September.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's realistic, that gives him time to.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, moving on to the, uh, solar ordinance discussion.
Well, hold on, there's one more there, Mike. Is case five one two different?
No, that case one five two is one we opened on Greg Wyrmann, that's the Greg Wyrmann.
Okay, sorry. Okay, got it.
All right, moving on to be solar ordinance discussion, now we've, we've tried to get on track here, I think with the addition of Amber. And our new attorney, I think we, we can get going in a direction on this. Um. I did have Amber. Prepare the current solar ordinance, Amber, did you put it in the tablet?
She sent it to Inial too.
It is in the tablets and I have help copies with anybody, but.
Yeah, cause I kinda wanna send them home with the board if we.
And then I also sent, late in the day, I resent the ones that I had done.
Yeah, I saw that.
Just. I just wanted everybody to have them.
Appreciate that, but I was like, wow. I don't want me to.
No, I knew we wouldn't look through those before.
And I thought you're handing us as the ones that this was the work in progress.
These are the, no, these are the two existing, so the twenty nineteen was the original. And then twenty twenty two is the one that we have today.
Okay. And then the battery, we've said.
I sent you the proposed battery and the proposed solar, where I took the information from these surrounding counties, again, it was very much a draft. Thought process.
So I know that there's a lot of folks up here with a lot of thoughts, I know when we talked about this a month ago. We had talked about doing a public meeting, um, again, to compile some thoughts here from the public, and then follow that with a. Tech review committee. Um, is that still the will of the board? Or do you folks have other ideas?
I personally still love the idea of getting feedback from the public.
Thoughts from the board?
But it will slow us down. In all fairness.
And we have the February to do this, right?
Till February, well, yeah, February.
I think we should. Let the tech committee sort out all the details and we as a board. Take your advice and listen to it and.
Then that direct. Then have a public meeting after that.
Or write and have a.
Kind of something to present.
Yeah, the tech review meetings technically are public, so we could also.
Right.
Choose to open the beginning of the tech review committee for feedback from the public.
Be a start.
So. I, I think we also need to figure out who's on the tech review committee right now.
We had that established.
Did we have it?
A lot of.
Yeah, so we've.
Well, Phil's gone.
Yeah, Phil's gone, and he was on it, and we don't have his replacement, so.
Right.
We don't know when that's happening.
Right.
That seat will probably remain vacant indefinitely.
So right now, it's Glenn, me.
And Mike.
And I was on it.
You are.
Then it was. Yeah, the president is by default.
Oh.
At least they were.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
I remember.
Yeah, I think I had the same reaction, yeah.
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 Oh, nice.
So yeah, so right now it's just the three of us. But, I mean, the, I. Uh, again, we could never find anything on the tech review and how it's appointed.
Right.
We can never find anything on the books anywhere, or how it's appointed, so we just went by what we were told.
Well, maybe we should defer to our attorney.
Yes.
Maybe he can give us some advice on how the tech review committee should be established.
From, coming out of what specifically?
Coming out of the planning department, so we use, so in our ordinances, we use. We use a tech review, the tech review committee writes, kinda works all of this behind the scenes. And then brings it and presents it to the planning commission.
Yeah.
Same with our current solar ordinance, when the tech, when solar would come in with all their drawings. And everything, the tech review committee would review to make sure everything is there, then they would bring their review results to the planning commission, so the tech review committees. From what I found online. It, it, it's kinda all over the place on how it. Works.
They're, they screen and they assess applications once they come in?
Yeah, they, well, they, they write the ordinances, really, they, they kinda work on writing the ordinances.
Okay.
And then in this case for solar, they also screened the permit prior to permit.
You're more concerned about them.
We need to rewrite, yes.
See, it's not uncommon, once you have a good draft, to then review it in a public meeting.
Right.
That is entirely appropriate, only thing that we've gotta be mindful is the timing that we have here up against February. For review, finalization, approval, publication, et cetera. So. We're underneath a three to half to four month timeframe to.
Yep.
Move on that.
So I think tech review is probably, I think we just gotta speed up, go to tech review. Have the tech review committee work on these. And then bring them back to the planning commission. And like I said, I, I see no reason why the tech review couldn't open, it's an, it's a public meeting, normally our tech review meetings in the past, they didn't really. Allow public comment, but. You can choose different.
Where do you see tech review?
So it's the technical, yeah, yeah, well, it's the technical review committee, and it was, it was originally made up of a surveyor. President of the board. Our, our inspector was always part of it. Our planning administrator would be there, and then there was. Two other. It was two, right, well, Phil was there, Phil's not here now, he was, he's our overdue extension.
Is that a county ordinance?
Well, that, that's that.
Cause I'm unaware of a state code that requires something like.
It's not required.
Right.
But it can be used, I guess, and we did use the tech review committee.
Okay. Well, I guess candidly, you guys, if it's not a requirement, you have the ability to appoint whomever you want.
Okay.
To a subcommittee, which is kind of what.
What we.
Right.
Well, here's another question, our board is so small now with our land commission. Could we just add some time on to August twenty seventh?
I'm gonna say no. And I'm gonna say that because I'm just not sure. I don't think we'll get through what we need to get there. But that's just my two second, I think that's, you know, this, you say small, but this is a big table with a lot of thoughts. So I think if we're trying to get down to at least a draft version, an initial draft version. I think a smaller board is better, and then make sure that the whole committee can look at it and make changes for. But that's just my.
I'm fine with that, that's what you're gonna answer. I mean, we had the tech committee and that's pretty much what I did, that was, it functioned fine.
Well, we need to probably create another number here.
We need one more at least, yeah. Last time we did it by kind of, we asked if anybody was interested.
Okay, so, right now we have Gwen. By office.
Mm-hmm.
Myself. Jean.
Mm-hmm. I know it. And then it was Phil. But we're short of it, so.
Yeah, you're missing.
So we need a replacement. I mean, technically, we probably don't have to have a replacement, but I'd like, I'd be curious to know if anybody on the board is interested.
Yeah, that'd be interesting. Yeah.
Well, I think.
Well, I would make a motion that we appoint Dale to the tech review committee.
Okay, a motion to appoint Dale to the tech review committee, do I have a second?
Second to that motion.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No, I don't have time.
I get motion passes.
But we don't have the time, so why?
Okay, so do we wanna set a date?
Yes.
That's up to you guys, cause I don't know.
Right.
Doesn't matter to me.
For me, again, I'd like to do it, stick with the twenty seventh, just do it after the meeting.
We get the leave hour, that's awesome. Good night.
Yeah.
Well, you just love keeping us here till like ten o'clock, don't you? I mean, I can make the, I can do the twenty seventh.
And at least we can get a start.
Right, cause the six thirty meeting will probably be a short meeting, it's not a full, so, yep, that review immediately following the planning commission works for me.
Any input from the surveyor?
Yeah, I'm sure that'll be fine.
Okay. Um, motion to have a tech review meeting starting at, um, we'll just pencil in seven or when the land commission meeting ends. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion, cause I'm not worried about.
I don't think you can make.
Make a motion that we have our tech review committee meeting starting at seven PM on August twenty seventh. Or following the planning commission meeting, whichever comes first.
Okay, do I have a second from the, I know TR Dave. I'll second that, okay, I have a motion a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Alright.
All right, so, uh, new business. Carbon capture is a big one that a lot of counties are working on, I did ask Amber to put this on the, our discussion for this evening. Um, we can completely ignore this, we can make recommendations, we can set goals. Um. But I'll leave this open for discussion of the board.
We need an ordinance. We'll set it in your to go. I believe they were starting to work on it, where that went, I don't know. But I know that.
So, explain to me. This is all new to me, I, carbon capture discussion. So are they paying people to pump this gas in their ground?
Yeah, I'm gonna be honest.
It's gotta be a money thing, right, I mean, something's.
If you might, if you might, Jack, Gary, we, we might have a guy that knows a little bit about it, a little bit. Would you mind sharing with the board what you do know?
Yeah, we're not, we're not in this, in this business, but generally it's a way of take, it takes a, a, a gas and it. Pumps it into the ground, typically replacing, uh, natural gas that's been pumped out, and then it's sealed into the ground, and there's different technologies to do this. It's a way of always arming dioxide out of the air. The, the combat.
Quiet, is this typically done with agricultural ground?
It, it can be, it, it's all about the underlying geology, so you need those cabins. You need a, the storage.
So not all pieces of ground's gonna be acceptable?
Oh, not in way, shape, or form.
Okay.
To answer your question, I'm looking it up.
But I guess my, I guess my point is.
Works, yeah.
Are they paying people to do this, is that what is?
There'd be at least, I'm sure, of some kind, at least somebody's ground.
It's common for carbon capture and storage CCS projects to utilize leased land for various components of the infrastructure such as pipelines for transporting the CO two. And the poor space for underground storage, land owners are typically paid for leasing their land for CCS projects, the specific compensation structure can vary, but generally includes. Lease payments, easement payments, royalty paid, so yeah.
I think we need to research it and see what the, what the lib.
I think we need to research it and see what the what the liabilities and what the dangers and hazards and and what what technologies found out. Negative and positive about it so far.
Can I say that the concern is not only where they deposit the CO two into the ground. It's all full of transit or transformation of CO two pipelines through counties. And a lot of counties have shut that off. They don't want it. Because the potential when you got CO two gas at fifteen hundred PSI. And if there's any water in a CO two line. If it creates a corrosive. Substance that could attack the steel piping that contains it. And there have been leakages and when you leak CO two around a population area. Unless you ran out real quick, you can't breathe it and it'll kill you. So.
It did happen explosion in Mississippi. There's been more than that.
Is there interest in Star County in this been shown by anybody? Does anybody know?
I mean, we don't know. We have no way of.
Stay ahead of the game.
Exactly.
Well, it's something to consider because if I'm not mistaken, Marshall County.
Already put in a moratorium, they put in a moratorium, I think.
I believe they have. They're working on.
Data centers. I mean, if we're talking about it, data centers would be the next thing that we also need to to start thinking about. Because we know that Laporte's looking at it. Order county, I think, shut it down, but don't quote me on that. So.
So what is the will of the board for carbon capture? Oh. Is this something we want to pursue? Um, maybe have the tech review committee um discuss this?
I think the tech reviews committee should find out everything they can and us as board members find out everything we can and. And be prepared for, be very prepared for it. And if it comes to the point we need to place a moratorium on it, we can certainly do that before before it gets completely out of hand.
So can I ask Nathan, does it make sense? Knowing that we don't always know this stuff is kind of, does it make sense? Let's say somebody comes in tomorrow and wants a permit for carbon capture. Are we then? In a bad place? Do we need to do the moratorium while we're working on ordinance or should we? Do we have the time and luxury to?
Yeah.
I was trying to look up in your code what, I mean typically you're gonna find this agricultural areas. I was trying to look up in your code what business is allowed in A areas. My sense is that this probably is not allowed in there. The status that I've seen, I've had clients that have been approached over in Lake and Newton counties is. The current status is companies are out there just trying to reach its leases, anticipation of. Futurally drilling, futurally trying to find aquifers. Because what's happening is a lot of companies out of state California and elsewhere, they're capped on the number of credits. They can issue other companies. So they're looking to buy space or trade urban credits. Companies around here, then they'll inject it into the ground. So I think it'd be wise to add it. I don't think you're at a point where you need a moratorium. I'm not giving an opinion on that by next month. I want to try to look in your code and see whether I think there's an existing restriction.
So I think we've got a little bit of time to, it sounds like. So I think we need to at least start talking about it at the tech review.
So maybe we should add carbon capture to what will be old business at the next meeting. And uh bring it up at the tech review meeting as one of the two topics for discussion.
Okay.
We won't spend necessarily a lot of time.
So, okay, and then that'll also give Nathan opportunity to. Get back to us.
Okay, so do I have a motion to table carbon capture until the meeting of September tenth?
I will make a motion to table carbon capture until the meeting on September tenth.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, any other business from the board to discuss this?
Um, I have something. I would just like to say that Amber's doing a wonderful job. She jumped right in. Head first, she's a self-starter and she, I mean, she's already a blood plane administrator. She's taken that certification already. Um, yeah, she's just a wonderful asset, but I think she's wonderful for the office, so.
Thank you. I think she's doing a wonderful job as well.
It's a little learning, but I'm enjoying it.
Appreciate you coming on board.
Absolutely.
Anything else from the board?
I have a couple of things. Um, so I wanted to follow up on at our last meeting. Um, at that time, our attorney was going to be working with Robbie to handle the. Uh Jeremiah Patrick complaint. Um, and I'm not sure kind of where we're at on that one.
We don't have an open case.
We don't have an open case now, okay. So that is.
Open a case and.
And what's involved in it.
Um, to file the complaint, get in what's currently going on out there. I think the original case was the equipment and uh loud noises of the equipment. I believe that's been moved is what the case showed.
What about those? Because the the complaint that we had was on the Airbnb. Operating.
But it was never originally under that complaint. It was operating the heavy construction equipment up and down the road and. Upload a file in there.
So for our perspective, Nathan, knowing that there is. The board now is aware, so where does that complaint come from? So the board is aware that he's operating a B and B or a cabin rental off of the property. After the Board of Zoning Appeals four years ago denied. And he was told that he couldn't operate that. So what are our, what would be the next potential steps?
So the next step would be to, I guess, obtain information that validates that. And it'll probably come out of the building inspector.
Okay.
And then once we have that, there would be a formal communication coming out of the office, whether it's via whether it was Amber. To them to cease and desist by a certain date.
Okay.
And then we would continue to monitor it, whether it's via VRBO, driving past, things of that nature.
Yeah, I mean, it's on VRVR Airbnb, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so I mean, I guess my, I'm I'm looking at the board to see how they want to handle that. But again, I don't know. I just know that I I received a complaint, I believe, after that complaint was closed, so that would be my question.
If the complaint's not recorded or.
Got it.
Right, we gotta put it into the system.
Yeah, we didn't have anybody to do that, so, okay.
So you had another one?
Oh, yes, so there was that and then um. Sorry, the um. Fifteen minutes. Um.
Okay.
So that, oh. How do we, this is a a attorney question, how do we get our as-built plans? Or the solar project that's been completed? We've been asking for them. My understanding is for months. And with no success in getting those. And now my understanding is now the project's actually been sold or given to NIPSCO. So that first company was defunct. It's part of the ordinance. They have to supply the as-built planes as after, when they complete.
So we have formally notified them that they're in violation of the ordinance. I mean, are they a part of the active grid right now?
My unders- well, that's a good question.
Let me, let me just pause real quick. Maybe we should give uh Nathan.
A chance to get caught up.
Get caught up on this before there's any discussion that might take us down a wrong.
Right.
Path here.
Understood.
Yeah. Fast. Um, since you have some information on this, would you mind sharing with Nathan and kind of get us up to speed here?
Yeah.
He's kind of coming into this blind and I don't want to open a conversation.
Yep, sure, understood. Yeah, I just know Jean had been trying, so I wanted to address it, so. So that's all I had.
Okay, anything from the public? Yes, sir.
I got two quick things. Uh, one, uh, with the technical committee coming up, again, extend uh offer to anybody. Do a tour of the operating mammoth north that's built under the first ordinance that you have there. Um, happy to do that. You gotta do it individually or whatever for the open to work. You can make that happen. Um, second, there was another version of uh both the battery and storage ordinance that was circulated right before the end of the year. And I don't know if you all have that as to look at. Um, but it's it's, you got the current version, you got the the version of.
Two drafts.
Yeah, two drafts. That that would just be a third draft that you ought to take a look at.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ma'am?
In your ordinance, are you gonna have for um the disposables of disposed? Being of the bad panels?
Not sure yet. I mean, until we all start really looking at it, that's where we'll want some feedback. So if you can attend the tech review committee meeting, I said we'll probably open the early part of it just to get some feedback from the public. As we're working on it.
You'll have something in your ordinance though?
Don't know. I I we we don't know what's going to be in the ordinance yet, so that's, we're really, we're we're building off of this, but there will be changes to the ordinance. We just don't know what they look like until we've had a chance to sit down as a board and review them.
Do you offer any information regarding to that? And apply for permitting and so forth?
For the disposal?
There is uh spent hours already leaning by fences just north of the beach.
There's nothing in the ordinance.
I don't know where, how they handle them. I mean, there has this material, so there's gotta be a licensed. Contractor handling that.
They're not hazardous.
There's six hazardous materials in makeup with them. Well, uh, next there it's a heart. Saying again, according to my information, I looked up the, and they got the solar houses, there's six hazardous material.
Not in every, not in 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 the older designs, there were more hazardous materials and the ones that are being used now. Uh, they can, I mean. They are not classified as a hazard.
Do you offer SDS for that?
Yeah, okay. Well, I don't think there is an SDS wall because there's no hazardous materials.
Okay.
As far as disposal, yeah, there's nothing in our ordinance now, Jean, so I'm not sure, other than it, yeah, I. Something for us to look at.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, anything else from the public? Yes, ma'am?
Yeah, um, we'd like to know how to handle a situation. The home uh next door to us, the Jason property burned down February thirteen and there've been no attempts. Any to clean it up at all and uh that's a hazardous situation right there.
Let let me ask. Have you spoken with uh Jean's? Okay. Jean, you have a, anything you're ready to present to the board on this?
Um, the property has been wrote up a couple of times for it and they provided me an address where they purchased another house, so I wrote them. At that location and they still haven't responded back. And then she came in and reversed second set of eyes. He went out and looked at it and he agreed. It's cleaned up as well, but they won't respond to us.
It's not repairable if they're completely destroyed. It needs to be.
And and debris, because the grass is growing up now, but. Before the grass actually grew up, debris was going in, blowing into the road and into the field across siding, all kinds of.
Do you have a address?
The burned property is nineteen thirty five North or three hundred East. And then Knox. No, there's no mailbox. There's no people there. There's no contact anybody. We have an open file on it up in the office as well.
Okay, is this um?
Yeah.
Is this something that we can move in a direction on?
Yeah, I just looked at the unsafe building ordinance is what you would follow. So I would anticipate looking at it, but you would send a notice to them. Uh, requesting that they attend the future unsafe business or uh unsafe building meeting. They fail to show up at that point and take legal action, move towards finally lean against it. Seek judicial action for, you know, tearing things down, stopping a lead against it for the cost expenses eventual sale.
So that would be a public hearing then.
Yeah, so the first step would be to set a meeting. An unsafe building.
It it is in this county. Does the plant commission also serve as the unsafe building?
Yes.
Committee, okay, yeah. So yeah, you can set it up for the next meeting. We would just need a formal notice certified mail to the record.
Is that something you could work with Amber and?
We'll collab.
Okay, and so let's just put that on the agenda for the next meeting. Actually, just to be safe on that, I'm not sure we would need to, but we should probably do a motion. To set that up as for the next meeting. So we have a property at nineteen thirty five North, three hundred East Knox, Indiana. That has potentially uh burned in some fashion, possibly abandoned. Uh, motion to put that on the next meeting for an unsafe structure.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Anybody else from the public? Alright. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second motion.
All those in favor?